Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the School Committee Recognition Night, an evening that is a favorite of all of ours. It's wonderful to see so many of you here to recognize and be recognized. We will begin the evening with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Mrs. Fagan will lead us in a prayer.
Lord, as we begin this session, let us acknowledge your goodness and mercy and ask your blessings on all our deliberations. We thank you for this opportunity to be of service to our community and to the young people entrusted to our care.
Thank you. Amen. Roll call, please, Mrs. Fagan.
Mr. Laura.
Present.
Mr. George.
Present.
Mr. Vieira is absent. Mr. Palowski.
Present.
Mr. Enos.
Present.
Mrs. Fagan is present. Dr. DeMello.
Present.
And Mayor O'Connell.
Present. Thank you. Okay, we will begin our evening with Principal Danielle Kurt from Friedman Middle School.
Thank you, Superintendent Cabral, Mayor O'Connell, school committee members. Have you ever noticed when people ask educators what level of work we work at? The reaction you solicit is always the same, given the grade level. At elementary level, you get the response, "Aww." At high school, "Wow." However, at middle school, the reaction is always, "Oh." Tonight, I'd like to share with you why middle school has been my home for the past 16 years. Many people think middle schoolers are especially challenging. However, it's been my experience, more often than not, that middle schoolers have a great deal of compassion, albeit sometimes you have to look a little harder to find those positive character traits. Tonight, I would like to honor a young man that embodies the term integrity. Kayden Lopez is in sixth grade at Friedman. Kayden is a humble young man that follows the rules and gets good grades. However, he's so much more than that. There is a young man in Kayden's class that has significant medical issues. Early on in the year, his peer shared his medical story with his class. Kayden immediately recognized his classmate may need a new friend more now than ever. Kayden went out of his way to offer friendship and compassion to his peer. If you were to go into their classroom today, you would undoubtedly see the two boys completing their assignments together. As the months have gone by, the boys have become better friends, especially after discovering their common interest of Pokemon. When Kayden isn't at school, like most kids, he's expected to complete basic chores. In addition to keeping his room clean, he also has to take out the trash. For completing his chores, he receives an allowance. He also has grandparents that apparently really love him and give him money randomly. Over the course of the past year, Kayden has diligently saved every penny he's earned to buy the coveted Pokemon Velvet game, right? Violet, my fault, violet, which debuted on November 18th. One day, while Kayden and his peer were chatting, they both shared how excited they were to get the new Pokemon game that was going to be released. As they continued to talk, Kayden informed his friend that he was scheduled, no, Kayden's friend informed Kayden that he was scheduled for a treatment on November 22nd. He expressed how scared he was and questioned why he had to go through the whole process again. In true Kayden fashion, he offered the boy kind words of encouragement and reminded him that everything will be okay. On November 21st, Kayden appeared at his teacher's desk with the much anticipated Pokemon, what's the word, velvet? Violet game. When asked why he had the game, he stated he wanted to give it to his friend. Kayden had wanted to ensure that his friend had something to make him smile for during the treatment, which was scheduled for the very next day. Kayden graciously gave his friend the game that in the student filled with tears. When I talked to Kayden about his extraordinary gesture, he was humbled. He acted like this was an obvious response to a friend in need. When I called Kayden's mom to tell her about this award, I asked if I could buy him the Pokemon game. She informed me that her sister had already bought it for him. She encouraged me to pay for it and buy another child the game. Kayden and his mom truly exemplify the notion of doing the right thing when no one is watching. Kayden puts his desires aside in the spirit of bringing happiness to a fellow friend. Kayden's story continues to inspire me. Throughout Kayden's career at Friedman, we will continue to educate him, but tonight, he has taught us all a very important lesson: When you can be anything in the world, be kind. Tonight, we recognize Kayden Lopez for his compassion and kindness.
Great job, Kayden. Next, James Cottemeyer, a teacher at Martin Middle School, will give us a special recognition.
Superintendent Cabral, Mayor O'Connell, school committee, thank you very much for allowing me the time to honor and recognize Martin Middle School student Nathan Ball. When I first mentioned other staff members that I was thinking of nominating him for a school committee recognition, every single staff member that I spoke to enthusiastically said, "Yes, he is very well determined." He has been described as resilient, hardworking, and dedicated to team by his cross-country coaches, polite, respectful, and appreciative of all help by his sixth-grade teachers. And according to Principal Pereira, the best start to every day is his good morning and asking for help with his water bottle, with a please and a thank you consistently, including about five when I went over to say hi to him when he got here. Kid always says please and thank you, all the time. Nathan will enter every classroom with a hello, a good morning, how are you? He will ask how you're doing when you leave. He wishes you a good day. He's just a good dude. He is a role model for other students in his academics as well, including all the work that he misses even over the weekend, if it means that. Pretty impressive. He raises his hand, he contributes to class discussions, he helps his friends, and he has a very good sense of humor. Nathan epitomizes everything anyone would want in a woodchuck or a Taunton student. And I think Taunton Public Schools is very fortunate to have Nathan Ball as a student. And I want to thank you guys for recognizing him tonight.
I'd like to invite Athletic Director Mark Ottavianelli now to provide a special recognition.
So, Mark couldn't be here today, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna take over for him today for Tilly or Liliana Babbage. All right. All right, so, we call her Tilly, we call them Tilly. We are recognizing Tilly for all her hard work and dedication to the support and leadership with the Unified Sports Program at THS. Tilly was a team coach and player who helped not only organize practices and organize players in games, they helped with game organization, roster management, and...
I'll jump in.
Oh, okay. Roster management. Tilly did a wonderful job motivating the players in games and assisted with students' confidence and has made many of the students in Unified Program happier. Tilly is also on my wrestling team, and for the past few years that I've known Tilly, Tilly has been probably one of the most natural leaders I've ever seen. She's just, they're just a great teacher. And one of the things right now is we actually have our first, I think Unified Program player on the wrestling team, and it's because of Tilly and because Tilly kind of suggested it to them to be on the team. And you just don't understand how much or how great it is to have someone like Tilly that will break something down to a student step by step, especially when a student is consistently having trouble. It's just kind of great to have them here, and that's kind of why I even showed up today, just to support them.
So, a couple of closing words about Tilly. I've known her for a year and a half and bumped into you in the hallway the other day, and you were beaming with pride about this excitement of receiving this award. So, tonight, I pulled Tilly next to me, I said, you know, "What does this mean to you?" And I saw that Tilly immediately started to well with tears. I said, "Tilly, why? What's going on? Why are you becoming emotional?" "It's a good emotion," she said, "it's not a bad emotion." Said, "Ms. Holcomb, I can't describe to you how much this means to me and the connection I've made, both now and that I'm gonna last a lifetime, and the difference it not only made with other students, but it made for me. So, thank you from the bottom of our hearts for helping those neurodiverse students, making them see the best that life has to offer, and you're part of the best. Thank you so much, and God bless you."
All right, next, we have Principal Bert Delaney from Taunton Alternative High School to honor two students.
A little bit shorter than Mr. Holcomb, just a little bit. Thank you, Mayor O'Connell. Congratulations to all the students here tonight. We do this three times a year, and it is really a highlight for me because there, we hear so much negativity in the world, but to come and see the pride of our system, the school system, is the kids. It just, it really, I get fired up over this. Even the kids today are like, "Mr. D, you're in one of those moods today." I'm like, "Yeah, 'cause we're recognizing some of our kids tonight." I'm also proud of my students, some of my students who I recognize, they seem to show their support. So, again, great, great night in Taunton Public Schools. Standing with me tonight is Mark Santos, a junior at Taunton Alternative High School, and Nathan Machado, a senior at Taunton Alternative High School. These two young men are being recognized tonight for going above and beyond in our Junior Achievement Program. A Junior Achievement Program at Taunton Alternative High School is in our second year. The goal of the Junior Achievement Program is to teach kids about financial literacy, business, and entrepreneurship. Last year, in our first year, thank goodness for Nate and some of our other students that graduated, Nate stepped right in as a leader and took our first year of Junior Achievement, pushed it to when we went to UMass Dartmouth, and we competed against a bunch of other schools, and we came in second place. I was so proud of the group that day, but I noticed Nate had this look on his face, which I've seen before, and so we talked afterward. I said, "Nate, you should be happy, you should be..." You know, he goes, "Nah." He goes, "Next year, we're gonna win." He goes, "And I'm gonna recruit some new students." So, what did he do? Year two, he's a senior, recruits Mark, and it didn't need a lot of recruiting, 'cause Mark stepped in right away in our Junior Achievement Program, and the both of them have propelled us right now. There is no doubt, we go back to UMass Dartmouth this year, that we're bringing home the first-place trophy. These two gentlemen have spent countless hours outside of school hours working on junior achievement. Again, I say that, again, countless hours working on junior achievement on their own time. They're teenage boys, they have stuff to do, but they have dedicated a lot of time to that. That's the character that these young men are. That's the character that their families have built into them.
really pleased about that.
We're always looking for role models at the Alternative High School, and I couldn't
They are, they're keeping themselves busy, and they're doing a lot of great things here,
ask for two better role models in the building.
and they're gonna be marching in the parade with me on Sunday.
Perfect. Mark and Nate, you've done a tremendous job in there this year.
Looking forward to that. So, I know, Mr. Delaney, you have another recognition?
I do. We're just getting started. Could Kayla Brennan join me at the podium? I expect, as you said, Nate and Mark, we're gonna bring home that trophy when we go to Kayla?
Hello. Again, thank you, Mayor.
UMass Dartmouth, and I'm proud, I'm honored and privileged to present to the school committee,
Thank you, Superintendent Cabral, school committee, everyone here, all the parents.
the mayor, the superintendent, and everyone sitting here, two fine gentlemen that I'll
This is one of those awards that as a principal, as a high school principal, you just can't
tell you, they're not the product of the Alternative High School, they're the product
say enough.
of the Taunton Public Schools and Taunton as a whole.
This is an Academic Excellence Award from Mr. Cabral and the Massachusetts Association
Congratulations, Nate and Mark.
of School Superintendents. And as any of you know, I don't really like to get all formal and read things, I'd rather just kind of say, I'm gonna read this, though. Certificate of Academic Excellence, Kayla Brennan. This is Kayla. Kayla is a senior at Taunton Alternative High School. Having duly qualified under the standards prescribed by the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, is hereby awarded this certificate of academic excellence. Kayla, no one is more deserving of this award at the Alternative High School than you. Kayla is the number-one student in the class of 2023. She has an overall GPA of 3.5. I could go into a bunch of other litany things, academics, on Kayla, okay? But what sticks out for me as a principal, she is a kind individual who goes out of her way to help others, okay? There isn't a day that goes by, as the principal of that building, no matter what kind of mood I might be in, and all depends, right, that I walk by her classroom, her math classroom, math, right? I might walk in 'cause I'm nosy, I might walk in to see what's going on, that Kayla is not working with another student that might be struggling with that math concept, not a day goes by. It's not gonna surprise you that Kayla's goal, and she's gonna get there, I might be retired by then, but she's, she wants to become a math teacher. And, Mr. Cabral, if you're still around, or I'm still around, I would hire Kayla now to be a math teacher. She loves math, she's good at math, and what every teacher needs, any of us in this business, you can be good at all those things, but she's kind, and she's good to people. We need more people like Kayla Brennan in our business. Kayla's, Kayla's math teacher got emotional when I asked her this. I said, "Give me a quote on Kayla." The math teacher said, who's been with me for 10 years, she said, "Mr. D, we, I don't have to tell you anything, you've got the biggest mouth around." I said, "No, give me a quote on Kayla." So, Ms. Olmberger says this about Kayla, quote, "Kayla is a bright, hard-working, kind, and caring student. She always goes above and beyond, setting a positive example for her classmates. She not only strives to do her best every day, she encourages those around her to do the best as well." Kayla, as a principal, I'm gonna miss you when you graduate, but I'm honored and privileged to have known you and have to work with you and present you with this Academic Excellence Award. Congratulations, Kayla.
math, so you are very unique in that aspect, too. We wish you the best of luck. Okay, our final student recognition is by Principal Scott Holcomb.
Thank you. These two students that are gonna receive these awards, it was difficult to capture the amount of accomplishment, so this may take a while because of the lofty goals and things they've accomplished. It is my pleasure to bestow the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents Academic Excellence Award upon two outstanding members of the Taunton High School class of 2023. This award is given to students who have distinguished themselves in the pursuit of excellence during their high school careers. Students are selected based upon their grade point average, class rank, leadership, and personal qualities. The first recipient is Mia Blinow. Mia, could you join me up here, please? Mia Blinow, daughter of Matthew and Carolyn Blinow, is an exceptional student who, by the time of graduation, will have completed two dual enrollment courses and 10 advanced placement classes. Her performance on advanced placement exams has earned her the College Board's AP Scholar with Honors Award and the National African-American Recognition Award. Tonight, she receives the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendent's Certificate of Academic Excellence. Mia has participated in an impressive range of extracurricular activities during her career at Taunton High School, including soccer, Spanish club, and yearbook club. She leads her peers by election and by example as vice president of the class of 2023 and as a public relations coordinator for the National Honor Society. But Mia's greatest passion is in the area of science and medicine, and it is in this area that she shines brightest. Mia started accumulating honors and awards for her science fair projects as a freshman, honors and awards that are literally too many to mention here tonight. Suffice it to say, she ran the table of awards at the local, regional, and state level, culminating as a finalist at the International Science and Engineering Fair. Mia continued to amass science fair awards at the state level in grade 10 and received the Genzyme Corporation Award for Distinguished Achievement for an Outstanding Biotechnology or Life Science Project. As a sophomore, she also helped found the Next Gen Med Club at Taunton High School and interned through the Emerging Leaders Program at Johnson &amp; Johnson. These experiences fueled Mia's desire to gain even more rigorous research and clinical experience, so she applied to a very competitive program at the Dana-Farber Harvard Cancer Center. Of course, they had the wisdom to accept her, and since her junior year, she has worked as a paid research assistant at Dana-Farber, gaining more than 640 hours of experience at this prestigious cancer center. In addition, she volunteers with the Brockton Neighborhood Health Clinic and Pan-Mass Challenge. We're not even sure how she actually sleeps, but we are sure that the field of cancer research has added an impressive young leader to its team of scientists. Mia's teachers describe her as an exceptional role model who is ready to work each and every day with a smile on her face, and, as it is a true blessing, who never settles for less than her best. Her guidance counselor who's with us tonight, Jared Homer, notes that Mia is determined to engage with the best courses each year, and her transcript is a wonderful testament to her work ethic and her ability to master the content in any field she explores. Her peers describe her as brilliant, generous, and kindly tenacious. She has earned the respect of everyone at Taunton High School, and I am so pleased to present this much-deserved award to her tonight. Let's hear it for Mia Blinow.
I think "wow" kind of sums it up for everybody here. And do you have one more, Mr. Holcomb?
Yes, we do. Thank you. And our last recipient of this award tonight is Jack Palowski. Jack, could you please join me at the podium? Jack Palowski, son of Nathan and Elizabeth Palowski, is a remarkable student who has completed one dual enrollment class, and by the time he crosses the stage at graduation, will have completed nine advanced placement classes. For this outstanding performance on advanced placement exams, Jack has earned the AP Scholar with Distinction Award. Tonight, he receives the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents Certificate of Academic Excellence. As an eighth grader, Jack earned maximum cum laude on the National Latin Exam, and as a freshman, he earned the James W. Pelletier Award for Outstanding Project at the Massachusetts Region III Science Fair. His early promise has blossomed into unparalleled achievement. Jack has earned exemplary grades in our most demanding courses, but his passions and contributions to our community extend far beyond the classroom walls. Equally at home, on the track, in the bandroom, at a math meet, or in the kitchen at Smitty's, Jack manifests Van Gogh's maxim, "The best way to know life is to love many things." He is a five-year member of the band, the Latin Club, the Math Team, the Key Club. He was appointed lieutenant governor of the Key Club at the district level, serving as a board member and liaison for eight key clubs in southeastern Massachusetts. As if that weren't enough, he is also a five-year member and three-season varsity athlete of the cross-country and track teams. He earned Rookie of the Year honors as an eighth grader on the cross-country team and brought his running career at Taunton High School full circle as the team's captain this year. As president of the National Honor Society, the Key Club, and the Latin Club, Jack leads his peers with affability that draws people into his orbit. His teachers describe him as thoughtful, analytical, and intellectually fearless. His peers describe him as funny, kind, and energetic. Mr. Moore, Jack's teacher and coach, perhaps sums this up best. Jack has this remarkable way to light up any room that he is in. He wants to do well for himself, but also wants the world around him to be a better place. My son is 10 years old, and in a world where my son can become anything, I hope he becomes a Jack Palowski. The world could certainly use more of you. All who know Jack are the better for it, and tonight, it is my pleasure to present him with the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents Academic Excellence Award. Congratulations, Jack Palowski.
I think Nate needs a tissue over there, maybe. Congratulations, Nate and Liz. Okay, now, Mr. Chairman is going to take over for the next round of recognition.
Thank you, Mayor. And for the next section of recognition, we're gonna be recognizing staff in the Taunton Public Schools, and each and every one of these students that came before us can't be where they are without the support of our staff. But a couple of themes, I just want to remind everybody what we heard of tonight, and being on the school committee, this is my fifth year, I'll tell you, tonight seems like one of those special nights. Paying it forward, kindness, instilling confidence, financial literacy, scientific research, and affecting the world. I mean, what more can we ask for from our students in Taunton Public Schools? I think we really need to applaud them once again. I think we really need to applaud them once again. Thank you so much. So next up on the agenda, we have the East Taunton Elementary School, Nancy Delaney, presented by Principal Claudine Nichols. Is Claudine here? Yep, there you go. Thank you.
I'm not as tall as Scott had me. Need to make some adjustments? No. Hopefully it'll stay. Maybe not. Okay. Good evening. Nancy Delaney has retired with 40 years' teaching experience under her belt. Since then, she has continued to work with our students in the Taunton Public School system for around seven years. She continues to support our students with reading and writing within our elementary school buildings. So to say that Nancy is retired may not be necessarily true. This year, we had a Title I teacher go out on maternity leave, and we wanted to fill the position, so right away, I thought of Nancy Delaney. When I asked her, she did not have that typical question of, "How many students will I service? What size will my group be?" Or what everybody asks, "How much will I be paid?" Instead, Nancy just said, "What day and time do you want me to start?" It just goes to show you what type of person that Nancy really is. She cares most about our students, in particular, the Taunton Public School students. In October, we held our first child study meeting, and this is a process where we take a look to see what supports we can provide our students. One student needed reading support. I reached out to Nancy, and within the hour, Nancy had already met with the student and placed her within a small group, and she just stated, "Happy to have her." So whether it be the funny stories that she tells us about her father, or the sayings that her mother used to say to her, Nancy always has something to share with her colleagues. You might also find Nancy teaching at BCC, tutoring, dropping off gifts to those that are ill, or participating in community meetings. She keeps us on our toes, and she will put any new teacher to shame with her stamina. The Taunton Public Schools and I truly appreciate you, Nancy. You are reliable, hardworking, and compassionate. Please don't ever retire. Thank you.
Principal Claudine Nichols, don't go too far.
Hi, yeah, thank you.
You're up next.
Okay. So I'd like to introduce Bernard Kalikste Iqbal. We call him Ben. Come on up, Ben. Ben is kind, soft-spoken, and well-loved by everyone around him. We are so fortunate when Ben came over to East Taunton Elementary School from Bennett, and there are so many ways to state how fortunate we really are. When we recently had some shifting of assistants because of new hire position, we had teachers reaching out to us, pleading to keep Ben in the classroom. They would state, "He's made great connections with my students. Can I just keep him?" Or, "I love his demeanor," or, "I want him to work in my classroom because he's so dependable and supportive." It was a tough decision, but there were so many disappointed teachers. While walking down the hall, I noticed that Ben was talking with two students. He calmly described a situation to them and asked them what they could do differently next time. He was able to put the students at ease in putting things into proper perspective. It's just amazing to see his natural ability to work with our students. Ben stays after school in order to make sure our students have loaded onto buses and safely made it home. There was a day when Ben returned back to the office. It was about 4:30, quarter to 5:00, and I asked him, "Why are you still here? What are you doing?" And you replied to me that... Now, mind you, he had covered a classroom for that day also. He wanted to go back to the classroom and make sure that it was clean and tidied up so the teacher wouldn't come back to a mess the next day. And I asked myself, "Who does that?" Ben does. So if you want to find someone that can greet you in the morning with, "Good morning, Claudine," which you always do, or else, "Goodbye, have a great night, Claudine," Ben is your man. His optimism is contagious, and he brightens up the building with just his light. He's compassionate and humble, so please don't ever change. Thank you. Thank you, Ben.
And now on the program, we have the James L. Mulcahy Elementary School, presented by Principal Katie Decuta, Assistant Principals Amanda Bobola and Stephen McDonough.
Good evening. Thank you. Our Principal Decuta could not be here this evening, so myself and Mr. McDonough are so excited to honor two of our all-stars. So good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to highlight our outstanding contributors at the James L. Mulcahy Elementary School. We have two special staff members here tonight that we would like to recognize. First, Mrs. Michelle Silvernail. She runs our office. She is the face of our building and is our air traffic control, answering countless phone calls and doorbells a day. She is extremely efficient. She is skillful, resourceful, knowing where everyone and everything is located. She is also solution-minded and optimistic, as well as forgiving. Mrs. Silvernail joined the Mulcahy team in June of the building's first year and continues to make an impact daily with her professionalism, knowledge, poise, and above all, kindness. We are so lucky to have her. Mrs. Rachel Farrar has been the Guidance Secretary at the James L. Mulcahy Elementary School since October of our first year in the new building. She has been instrumental in the development of our systems and procedures for student records, classroom placements, and the overall organization of documents and preschool registrations. Mrs. Farrar has consistently balanced and positive. She is not only genuine, but also thoughtful in her language and commitment to our staff and families, always putting students and staff first. Thank you.
Next up on the program, from the Joseph C. Chamberlain Elementary School, we have Principal Jen Peters.
Hi, everybody. So tonight, I'm really proud to recommend three of our counseling staff members. We have Caitlin Hanson, Julia Maguire, and Heather Williams. And when I sat down to write about this, I had two options. I could write about each of them individually, or I could write about them as a team. And it was a no-brainer for me that I had to write about them as a team. So these three women are relatively new to Chamberlain, and despite that, they've jumped right in with all of our school and district initiatives to help support our students at Taunton Public Schools. This team in particular has a really innate ability to see beyond outward behaviors, struggles, challenges our students are facing, and they actually seek to get to the root cause of the problems. They are a huge support for our families at Chamberlain, and they jump right in without hesitation to support any family that's in need, and they genuinely care about all of them. Tonight, they actually came from their very first family night, and it was a huge success, so I was really proud of that. They did a wellness night for our families, and they did, you know, plan on wearing yoga pants, but then they found out I nominated them, and they changed their outfits, so... But I assured them they could still be comfortable. So they work alongside me and my administration team daily, and I can honestly say that our team wouldn't be the same without the special skills that they bring to the table. So I personally can't thank them enough for everything that they've done and will continue to do for all of our staff, students, and families. Thank you.
Next up, from the Joseph H. Martin Middle School, we have Principal Jamie Ferrera.
Hello. I would like to call to the podium three members of our guidance team, Melanie Ferrera, Paul Kirschbaum, and Maria Petrelli, please. So thank you, Superintendent Cabral, Mayor O'Connell, members of school committee, for the opportunity to recognize three outstanding employees at Martin Middle School. So as you all may know, I am a new principal at Martin, and walking into Martin, I didn't have the foundation of friends or familiarity that I was, you know, had long expected and built at the high school. And with these three individuals, they became a stabilizing element for me. They are a foundation for the success that we're able to build upon at Martin. I think it was Paul, actually, that said to me, "Welcome to the front of the house." And if you're familiar with that phrase, it's a phrase that's used sometimes in restaurants, in the restaurant industry, or in theater. And the front of the house is usually the group of individuals that works with a customer base, with the clients, but also has the absolute ins and outs of the goings-on of those clients. And I can't think of something more appropriate to describe these three individuals than they run the front of the house. They know our students, they know our families, they know the ins and outs. They're... I am often so unbelievably impressed with the details about what our students need or what are going on in their lives. They're so focused on the relationships that they've established with our kids, with our families, and they do it with such a connectedness that it's genuine, you can feel it, and we would not be as successful and as strong of a building without the work that they do. Selfishly, in them, I found my own supporters and dependable colleagues that I could go to and that they work tirelessly in the service of our students. The depth and care of concern that they have for our kids extends beyond the workday, beyond the work hours. I will get... We'll have email conversations or text messages about things that they want to carry out the next day, or see through the next day, or they're... You know, they may carry that... They carry those concerns for our kids home, and it just... I'm so impressed with the commitment that they have to our kids. I've watched these people laugh and have dance parties with our students when in the background I know the details of a very unsafe situation that might be going on, but they're doing this just so our kids feel safe and secure and supported and loved because that's what they feel when they are with these individuals. I've watched them stand in hallways and just breathe with kids through an anxious moment because that's all that was needed, and that's all that they were capable of at that moment. And I've seen those kids weeks later be completely wonderfully transitioned back into school population, back into where you want to see kids because of the work of these individuals. I've watched them cheer on and celebrate and be the greatest cheerleaders for our Martin kids at events, or at sporting events, or even just something as dance parties on the dance floor of a Halloween dance. They're our kids' biggest champions and cheerleaders. Daily, kids come into our building looking for them because they are their people. That says a lot to me. Kids come to school because they know they have these people there, they know they're on their team, they know they're in their corner. So they've also become that for many of us at Martin as well, where they're our people, they care, they're invested, and it resonates through. I've been in education for many years now, I won't say how many, and I can say that these are easily three of the best guidance councils I've ever worked with. But as a trifecta, I don't think you'll find any better. So I would like to extend my thanks in many ways for all the students of Martin and for the teachers and staff at Martin to Melanie Ferrera, Paul Kirschbaum, and Maria Petrelli.
Principal Ferrera, you're up again.
I am, and this time, I'd actually like to recognize someone who works at Taunton High School, but works in the service of Taunton Public Schools very often, so Mr. Matthew Bork. So as many of you may not realize, Mr. Bork is a graphic design teacher at Taunton High School. But you don't have to look very far to see where his work has been illustrated on many of the walls and faces of the Taunton Public Schools. Probably did those banners that are hanging right there. If you look in the walls of the cafeteria, if you look in the beautiful work that he's done in the fieldhouse, he is so impressive, his artwork is so present, and it really changes the faces of many of our buildings. So again, as a new principal, I got super excited because Martin became sort of a blank canvas to me, and I was trying to capitalize on the momentum of school spirit. And I didn't really know how to do that, but I knew who to ask, and that was bring in Matt Bork and have him look at these walls and look at this space and think about how we could really get involved in that. And the best part about him, too, is he has no problem kind of ratcheting it back because I get ultra excited, and I'm like, "I want M's everywhere and woodchucks everywhere." And he's like, "Okay, well, we don't want to oversaturate, we want to balance it out." And so he can put the brakes on when necessary because he's got the eye for it, and he knows how to really balance it out. And he just very recently, he changed the face of the front of my office, the main office at Martin, and, you know, we made Woodchuck Nation and some... The welcoming and the new banners in the front, and it... He made what was originally my pride and joy, which was a laser-cut wood three-dimensional M, which I saw Principal Holcomb with a tiger paw in his office. And I definitely had 3D wood art envy, and I saw that, and I saw it being installed, and I was very envious of it, and Matt very graciously made me one for Martin as well. And I put it in the main office, and no one can walk by that without commenting on it. And I put it in the main office, and no one can walk by that without commenting on it. And if you notice, it's often the backdrop of my Twitter profile for if we're going to take a picture, we're taking it in front of that beautiful M. It really just, it graces the office, and it's wonderful. And to make my life even better, if I just said that that was my pride and joy, that was until he made me an 11-foot M that is in my gymnasium now. And it was enormous. It was delivered in many, many pieces. But the best part about that was that, what you may not realize is, he creates the art, but he installs the art as well, which is not a small task. So, he was in my gymnasium at Martin installing that M while intermural sports, because it was after work hours, and this is his commitment to it, is he was there installing the M, and students were fascinated and watching, and they couldn't believe how great it was. And I went down, because I had to see it when it was all done, and I run down there, the kids are under it, and the kids were saying, "Miss Farrar, Miss Farrar, that woodchuck is so intimidating, like our opponents are going to be so intimidated by that woodchuck now." So, that is a small, that is no small feat alone, that if you can make a woodchuck intimidating and be a true competitor out there, I mean, that alone, we should tip our hats, too. But there's places all over Martin, and I probably am going to get a limit on how much I can use Matt Bork, but he has really, he's really changed the face of it. And what I want to say is, he gets excited about it, too. And that's what's so great, is he is so passionate about the art that he creates and where it goes makes a huge difference in someone's day, in my day, in my students' day. For example, my cafeteria was very blank, just blank walls. And I look at blank walls, and I think, "What can Matt Bork do?" And I asked him to create some vinyl artwork for the cafeteria. And for you, for those of us that know a teacher's schedule, there's not a whole ton of free time, but he found a window of free time in between parent-teacher conferences. So, daytime parent-teacher conferences and evening parent-teacher conferences, there's about two hours in between where maybe you can have dinner, take a small break. Nope, Matt Bork is in my cafeteria with a heat gun and a vinyl squeegee and transforming that space, and kids came in the next day. I even had my lunch lady's taking pictures behind it with it, taking selfies with the beautiful art that he put in there. So, I could go on about the things that he does, but what I don't think that maybe he doesn't realize is the impact. And he changes an environment for the better every day, and he does that for kids, he does it for all of us. He's a change agent through the art that he creates, and for that, I'm very grateful, and I appreciate you. So, thank you, Matt Bork.
Thank you, Principal Pereira. Next up from Taunton High School, we have Principal Scott Holcomb and Assistant Principal Kristen Keenan.
Good evening, Mayor O'Connell, School Committee Superintendent Cabral, and Assistant Superintendents Barata and Moynihan. We truly appreciate the time and the energy you've put into acknowledging the hard work and dedication of members of our THS community. From anecdotal discussions that I've had with former recipients, it means an incredible deal to our THS staff, members who are recognized for continually going above and beyond for the students of Taunton Public Schools. So, thank you. That being said, we are delighted to honor Ms. Caitlin Germany this evening. Ms. Germany has been a longstanding teacher in the math department at Taunton High School. When she came here, she immediately immersed herself in all things THS as both a coach and advisor, in addition to her teaching duties. There is a common denominator, get it, common denominator, okay, common denominator in all of the things that Caitlin has put her time and energy into at THS, and that is the growth and the well-being of all of our students. But most importantly, she brings the fun. That's true. She has been our student council advisor during a really difficult time in our lives through the pandemic, and she has continued to do everything she can to create wonderful memories for the students of THS, so much so that last year, she earned the prestigious recognition of being called Massachusetts Student Council Advisor of the Year. She plans Spirit Days. She plans events. It's unbelievable. I know it's a Spirit Day when she comes in looking like Olivia Newton-John, or a Hawaiian tropical something or other, a lumberjack. What other ones have you done? There's quite a few. It's years and years and years worth, and she gets everybody into the spirit. And really, I think coming out of the pandemic, what we really needed was Caitlin to bring us back to center and what school's about, which is about learning, it's about fun, it's about building relationships, and Caitlin has really done that for us. Last year, we finally had homecoming again, and it was in the fieldhouse, and we kept just smiling about how amazingly well it went and how well-behaved the students were, and they were just dying to get back to doing something that they considered normal. And they were so thankful of all of the work that you did. In fact, I did, I did talk with the student council president and vice president Sophie Hoy and Caitlin O'Leary, and this is what they had to say.
Oh, boy.
I know. In recent years, the Taunton High School Student Council has struggled to rebuild its program, along with many other clubs, due to the pandemic. A club built off of school spirit was slowly falling apart, and it was declining from the pandemic, and the instability everywhere made it hard for students to connect with their school community and each other. However, Ms. Germany remained a constant. Not once did she lose hope in our school or the spirit in our building. These past few weeks, we were able to restore Spirit Week with events like dodgeball, trivia, powder puff, and have the first in-school pep rally in many, many years, where an entire school was able to gather together in our fieldhouse and display what we have been missing, the cheer and the happiness in the environment. Not many people see the hard work and dedication it has taken to get to this point, and whether she knows this or not, Ms. Germany's hard work has made an impact on every student in our school. This would not have been possible without the continued hard work that Ms. Germany brings to every single meeting and every single event at THS. So, Ms. Germany, thank you for being a superhero in our school community. Congratulations.
All righty, next up on the agenda, last but not least, from Taunton High School, we have Associate Principal Dominique Williams.
We're a team. Get out the back, come on. Let's go, let's go, let's go. First and foremost, I want to thank the mayor, the school committee members, and Superintendent John Cabral, Principal Holcomb, Assistant Principal Keenan, for this opportunity to recognize... Just for the opportunity to recognize this group of staff members that I'm about to highlight, our mental health counselors mean so much to the school, our parents, our community, and our students. I want to start by saying, one of my favorite things to do at the end of every day while the kids leave is ask them, "What's their favorite part of the day today?" I think it's important to reflect on it, and I can't tell you how many countless times kids say, "Meeting with my counselor." And I can say what I want up here, but that right there tells me more than all of us need to know what our counselors mean to our students. So, I'm going to highlight Sarah Carroll. Can you guys come up? I'm sorry. I know Sarah's not here. Sarah's not here, and Deb Carrera's not here, but I want to highlight them as well. So, Brenda Pereira, Florence Cannavan, Stephanie Littlefield, and Sean Dutra, if you guys could please come up. We're a team. I told you, we're a team. Get in here, come on. So, first and foremost, on behalf of the associate principals and administrative staff, we just want to say thank you. The ability to be flexible and accommodating allows everybody in the building to feel safe and supportive. When we think about the energy that you guys give, it can't be measured. You go above and beyond to allow the school, the community, and the parents to uncover layers that support healthy connections between students, staff, and families. Lastly, on behalf of the entire administrative staff, I want to thank you all for not only being the go-to people for our kids, but also the go-to people for our staff. Thank you. Throughout the busyness of the day, you remind us and everyone else that you surround that everything's going to be okay. So, thank you on behalf of all of us.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, Brenda, Florence, the board, there you go.
Thank you very much for all participating tonight, but before we leave, I think I just want to reflect on Mr. Williams' comments about asking the students as they leave the building, what's, you know, reflecting on what was the best part of your day. I think we can go home tonight, reflect on what's the best part of Taunton Public Schools with all these outstanding students that are here in the room, our staff, and the students that are part of the system. On behalf of the school committee, Mayor O'Connell, Superintendent Cabral, thank, he didn't want to say anything before, now he wants to say something. Okay, Superintendent Cabral, go ahead.
I changed my mind, because everyone always, today I was having a conversation, and somebody made the comment, like, "Wow, you have a difficult job." And my response back was, "I have the best job in Taunton." So, I want to congratulate all the students and all the staff for making me feel like I'm the luckiest person in this city, because I get to work in Taunton Public Schools with these amazing students, these amazing parents, these amazing educators. So, thank you for making my life and my job easy. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent, and I'll open it up to the school committee members to have anything to say before we depart tonight. Mr. Laura.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As a proud member of this committee, let me just thank you, for all of you, for all that you do. The words that we're exchanging this evening were very, very promising, and it gives us the feeling of what we could accomplish together. So, for all of you and what you do, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Laura.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mrs. Fagan, Secretary Fagan.
Yeah, I would just like to thank everybody again. Having had all my children come through this high school, all six boys, and then some grandchildren here, I can't say enough about the great education they got and the great memories they got in this building, and how so many of you touched their lives and made a big difference. And already, my oldest granddaughter is graduating from college, so I'm really starting to feel it, but it's always nice to come here and see all the staff, and I want you to know, we sincerely appreciate all that you do. We know it's not an easy job, but thank you so much, all of you.
Thank you, Secretary Fagan. Mr. Enos, Mr. Pawlowski, and Mr. George.
I just want to say, as a social worker, it feels great to hear all the support that our staff are giving children, that children are giving other students, and it's just great to see and to hear all the accomplishments that our students are making, and it's just, you know, this makes us really proud to be a part of this community, and, you know, this is the part I think people really need to hear more of, and I just look forward to the next one. Everyone, keep it up.
Thank you, Mr. George. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to congratulate everyone this evening, too. We are so proud of everyone here, of our students, of the parents, and our staff. And one thing I noticed tonight was the support staff was recognized, the staff who are really there for our kids at their deepest time of need, and it just seemed to be kind of a theme throughout this whole evening, your care, your compassion, your understanding, your patience, and you are such an important part of the school system and so important to our children. So, thank you all for what you do every day. You have a really challenging job, and we are grateful for you and grateful for everyone here in the Taunton school system. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and now, Mr. Laura.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Yes.
Merry Christmas and happy holidays.
And a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it. Good night, everybody. Thank you so much.